We'll start with public comment. Do you have any public comment?
Yes.
Hi Peggy, how are you?
Hi there. Yes, I have a public comment on this. It's on trapping, of course. And most of you folks know me that I'm a veterinarian and I've treated animals that have been trapped. I'll make it short, but there are two things that I think are really concerning about this, about trapping. Number one is so many of the animals are not.
Peggy, I'm really sorry. I think you want to go to the select board meeting. They're, they're talking about the trapping issue tonight. This is planning.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's the select.
No problem. No, it's very easy to do.
Sorry about that.
Peggy, I'm going to drop the select board link in the chat. So you can copy that right into your browser and jump right on over to select board.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your, your contributions.
You're welcome. Oh, I hope I've got this. Yeah, here it is.
I knew this to this.
Just like in person.
Yeah.
Room, same exact thing.
All right. Okay. So any other public comment?
Yes.
Oh, yes. Uh, so Kate is online. She's our vice chair. If you want to come on over and just reintroduce yourself for folks who might not have joined. And Sheila is joining in now from the waiting room. Okay, great. Hi Sheila.
My name is Brian Forrest. I'm the former NG. NG. Coordinator, yes. Thank you. And I showed up at the at the energy committee last week. There was a couple of issues I wanted to take a look at. First one is ARPA projects. Apparently we have $1.8 billion.
I don't have this document, but I can quick scan it and. Okay, that'd be great. So that we can share it with our online participants. That would be great. Okay, hi to us. Thanks. Oh, here too. Yeah. And then since we seem to be just actually doing hybrid meetings, if you have something you'd like to share in the future or any of the energy committee, maybe you can send it ahead just so we can sure, make sure it's available digitally. That'd be great. Okay. We're doing public comment. I'm just waiting for this to be scanned so that Sheila and Kate can see it. Just one minute, guys. Sorry. You're in, Sheila? That should have sometimes unstable, so she'll pull you back.
Watching so I know when I have to.
Trapping. There we go. Just posted it on Zoom. Go ahead, Brian.
So I've prepared a couple of possible ARPA projects. One is to commission a study that would rank the energy plan pathways by its impact and its cost, thereby providing an order for projects in the 2427 capital budget. Those are ranks 14 out of 15, shouldn't count towns and tax rates. We funded parts of the energy plan by raising taxes as we do for other public safety expenses. Police and fire to some of $2 million a year. Those would rise to number 13 out of 15, with plenty of space for between Williston and the next lowest taxed town. So Williston, a low tax town, can address our own responsibility for the climate crisis. I expect other towns to do this. South Broden had the CCRPC right there, Climate Action Plan. The second thing I remember posing is a solar farm that Williston built a solar farm owned by a town administered by the Public Works Department. Town owns property that should be reviewed to use as well as other available lands in Williston. Replace fossil fuels with clean, non-carbon based energy and have control and repelliveness of the source. The solar farm will simply own a local source of energy, control that cost, create local jobs to keep our money local. From the energy plan 6.2, the town shall continue to leave the community by increasing its renewable energy production and battery storage portfolio of municipal buildings. And the second issue I want to bring forth by is bylaw amendments. These, apparently this schedule that had down here has been revised and it's more of an extended schedule. But reviewing the energy plan committee minutes from the beginning of the year, I didn't see any discussion of of bylaw provisions. They have it on their future agenda. As an item on future agendas, but they haven't gotten to it yet. And these are lists of some of the bylaws that that could be addressed and should be addressed. The we have a climate crisis and I don't see this town, bodies of this town acting on that crisis. When three towns in California burned to the ground and 85 people were lost and 18,000 structures burned to the ground. It was a tragedy. It was catastrophic. But those people could go to another town. They did go to another town. They found refuge in other towns and rebuilt their lives. We don't have another planet to go to. And this seems to be one of the critical issues this town needs to address and this whole world needs to address. This, this body and this town, I think, should address these issues.
So can I ask a question?
Sure.
That you know that I'm strongly for all these things. It says energy committee meeting May 10. So did you present this to the energy committee at their May 10 meeting? And what was their response? Because most of these are action items. I would expect the energy committee to initiate.
Yeah, this is something I presented the energy committee and said on top there. But I thought I should bring up this body as well because this body works, the energy committee is partly planning department.
Yes.
As you are.
So you're making us aware that you did that.
And making aware that that this, this body can propose. It goes, I don't know if it goes through this body or by law amendments or goes directly to a planning.
Bylaws come through here, but we've sort of put the feeler out like energy committee. Do you have any bylaw changes you want us to be rolling into the work we're doing? Because most of what we have are about land use and.
Yeah, so I think that I think there should be concern on this committee that, that there hasn't been any action from the energy committee so far on bylaw amendments and, and as that they're decent. Because I think you all have a stake in future of this town, future of the planet.
If I could take the opportunity just to pass two suggestions on probably through you, Melinda, to the energy committee. One is that I actually put this in the Observer a couple of years ago, the idea of a climate action fund, much like our environmental reserve fund, because you don't always know in time for budget cycles, what projects are going to be opportune that year. And so having a way to put some funding aside that you can draw down and use for matches of grants, I think would be really helpful. And I think that speaks somewhat to what Brian's saying here. I think he's being more specific to put things in the budget and let that affect the tax rate. And I'm just saying another, I'd like to give additional input of having a climate action fund would be helpful, I think.
Yeah, I think that the, that there needs to be, the energy plan needs to be looked at closely and it needs to be funded. We fund other public safety departments which do not have the certitude that this issue has. We all hope that we don't, house won't burn down, only the fire department, but about more than likely it won't. This, this plan is heating up. Just to back up a little bit. What, what the climate crisis is, is that the sun is, is putting more energy into the planet than the planet releases back in the atmosphere. So every day that temperature rises a little bit. And it's not a, an arithmetic straight line progression. This is a, a geometric progression. It's going to be, the rate is increasing. The rate of heating is increasing. So we may feel comfortable now, but it's going to get very bad, very fast. And once the, once the polar ice caps melt, there's no thermal flywheel holding us back. We're going to see a huge acceleration. They're melting at a pretty fast rate. So I think there's an urgent issue that the body.
I do have a second thing that I wanted to pass on to Melinda, which is South Burlington is recently revising their development standards to be much more leaning into solar. And when I brought this up during our tap corners thing, I was told we can't regulate. So all we can do is say it could be solar ready. They're actually going quite a bit further and I would like us to learn from their experience. And if we can go further, I'd like to go further.
Yeah, the, the catch that South Burlington or the way they found to do that was to require solar energy production, but not require grid connection. And if I was going to argue against that requirement at the PUC, I would say there's no such thing as putting solar panels on an apartment building and not connecting them to the grid. You are stepping into PUC territory, but their council reviewed it. They, they, they've put it up for adoption. They're considering it. It's a bold move. We'll get the benefit, I think, of seeing how it plays out pretty quickly. Or we could convince the select board and ourselves to go ahead and do it as well.
Yeah, I'd second that. I would like to see impervious surface, whether it's parking lots or roofs, be optimized for solar. And in some cases, that means reorienting, reorienting the direction of some roofs. Rather than just sort of aesthetically, it's nice to have houses this way and this way. Maybe we want to take advantage of the sun more.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. And help put this into the minutes or. Okay. So Steve, minutes.
Our short minutes.
Yeah, our very short minutes. Any corrections or? I didn't either. Okay, do I have a second? A second. Thank you. Ellie seconded. All in favor of accepting the minutes as written?
Hi.
Hi. I'm going to abstain because I wasn't there. I think you still have four.
Yeah, we do have four. Okay, thank you, Kate. All right. Notices from other jurisdictions. Do you want to give us the quick rundown on Essex?
Sure. Yeah. Quite a lot going on in this Essex revision. A lot of it falls into what you might think of as cleanup, something we're going to talk about a little bit later. But there's a number of housing supportive provisions in this Essex amendment as well. And a lot of them have to do with removing, not necessarily outright prohibitions, but procedural impediments or hindrances to multifamily types of housing in residential districts. So you have to get into about the third or fourth page of the summary. But there's things like allowing multifamily by right, essentially saying this is a permitted use. It's not a conditional use. You don't have to convince the DRB you ought to be able to do this. You have the right to do it. Just, you know, meet the standards and go on. So I noticed a bunch of adjustments in the bylaws like that. Very similar to some of the, the non-growth management amendments that Melinda's been talking about for us. There's also a few things they're doing that are catching up. So, you know, S226, a couple of years ago, said you've got to treat a duplex like a single family home and allow it everywhere. Single family homes are allowed without any special dimensional standards, et cetera. They're doing, they're catching up to that. And then, you know, we're going to find ourselves seeing something very similar with the passage of S100 around projects up to a fourplex. So you want a substance in that.
This is Essex town, right?
It's an Essex town.
Which is, has they're, have not yet changed from having their planning commission function as their DRB. Is that right?
I believe that's correct. So they have, they're, they're also making more things by right and fewer things conditional as, as the DRB or functioning that way.
And I think they're increasing, one, increase the number of members, two, or something.
I think there was something like that too. Yeah. I did not see anything in those proposed amendments that I thought would be detrimental to Williston in any way.
Thank you. Any questions on that, for that? Okay, so planning program work plan.
Yeah. So in, in whatever time I have right now, which is until I have to run to the select board to talk about a sale of sewer allocation for a proposed hotel in Finn Crossing and then stay for Wimberland that goes over for housing. This is really about the town plan. And I want to, I want to be updating the planning commission frequently and talking a little bit tonight about how the staff has conceptualized both the work path for town plan and some of the initial promotional stuff we're doing and activities we're doing around it and the branding of the planning effort.
I don't know if other people had the same trouble I did, understanding that like there's four, six different tables. And some of them are just one year versus the next year. But they're not all just one year versus the next year. And so I got a little bit lost into what was what.
Yeah, so I didn't mean for everybody to have to digest this whole big thing. But this is, this is the overall department work plan. And we go in about quarterly and adjust this such as we can. So the first couple of pages shape and are just FY23.
Because it said FY23, but there was stuff that was in calendar 22.
FY23 starts in July of 22.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. That's why. And that's why we do that, because it catches us all the time too.
Okay.
And, and so generally there's a couple of top line items in these fiscal years related to town plan. But it, you know, it bounces around a bit. And most of this document is just to say that the bulk of FY24, certainly the first three quarters of FY24 are all about public engagement. We closed out our request for proposals deadline on Friday. We're moving forward on that now. We're looking to get a consultant in the door to help us with outreach. But as you know, we had a town fair related to green up day coming up and we just couldn't help ourselves. We had to start the town plan effort ahead of that consultant hiring, couldn't pass up that opportunity. So, you know, really basic public engagement going on right now. The williston2050.com website is up. We will keep that domain as the domain, the website may be reworked by the consultant at some point. This is just a very basic Google site right now.
It's nice.
And obviously we have a logo and a little bit of branding and I want to talk about that a bit tonight. But we'll keep this as a home for the town plan effort throughout, throughout the process and through adoption.
Okay. And on the planning, the schedule MPG, I assume is Metropolitan Planning Grant?
Municipal planning grant. Through the CCRPC.
Not miles per gallon.
Not miles per gallon. Yeah. And, and so that's, you know, a lot of what I lose sleep over at night is staying ahead of grant matches, budget requests and grant deadlines. So, you know, you've got to get the match money you need. You've got to be asking for in August to have it available the next July. And you're thinking about when am I going to apply for that grant, et cetera. So we're always tracking things that way. So a couple of town plan activities to date. We did launch the website. We launched the postcards from the future public engagement process, which there's yellow postcards on the table tonight. Write out as many of these as you want. We're going to be taking them everywhere we go. When we go to talk about the town plan, we're going to take them to our boards. We have them available out front of the office and our mailbox is out there. You can stick them in there. We are keeping an eye on that. And we'll be typing in the responses anonymously and getting them out on the website as they come in. So it's a nice interactive thing.
I mean, I have a quick question on these. Have you reached out to schools at all?
Not yet. We, well, we've reached out to the schools, not with this activity yet.
With the postcards, I think kids would really like it. And it's, you know, the school year is ending soon. So you may not have a consultant on board yet.
Still do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we're going to, we're going to keep using this like throughout all of public engagement. Because it's just a nice, easy, get your brain working. Imagine it's 2050. What are you glad that Williston decided to do back in 2023 or for 2025?
Yeah, when is the end of the school year?
Way too soon. So, so we'll be getting that up about that.
Kate probably knows. Last day of school.
Might be June 15.
It's, it's June 16.
Okay, so, you know. We did work with a team from the, this year's Leadership Champagne cohort on our branding and some of the other efforts here. So shout out and kudos to them for helping us. And they got us almost all the way there with this logo. One of the things they did was we wanted, we wanted Williston 2050. We wanted a slogan underneath it. And we just didn't have one. We couldn't think of one. And we ended up going to these three words, livable, resilient, equitable. And this, the idea of having those three words really is rooted in a number of years of staff retreats we've had over the last five years where we've taken a day out of the year to talk about town plan, because the last few years we've been doing a lot of other stuff. We don't think about town plan all the time. And one thing we did in that exercise was always talk about what's not in the town plan that should be in the town plan. Town plans in Vermont have 12 required elements. They have to have a land use plan. They have to have an economic development plan. They have to have a transportation plan, a school facilities plan, et cetera, et cetera. And so we use that initial framework to talk to the town plan, but then we say, well, what's not here? And not a lot about climate change, not a lot about resilience in general and, and being set up as a town to be able to handle all kinds of change. In the time since the current town plan was adopted in 2017, issues around equity have just come to incredible prominence. We've seen that a couple of times. And in conversations with other planners about equity and, you know, I made a comment in a meeting with a number of my, my colleagues about got to get equity into the next set of comprehensive plans. And somebody said, well, I hope you're not just going to write an equity chapter. And I said, I, I don't think so. And he said, you know, because then it's like, well, we did equity. It's there in chapter 13 on, on the end of 12 and we're all set. And lastly, livable. I think a lot of our public comment about what's going on in Williston comes down to various concepts people have about livability. And so those were the three words we picked. And you can sort of thinking, think of them as being woven into the 12 required elements.
Sorry.
Emily, from the agenda, if you can bring up just that little three column thing, I'll just talk over that for a second.
Yeah.
Well, it's good. So this is, this is really, really drafty draft. And I've looked to working with the commission members on this. But we started to break this out and think about, well, what are the things that live under the livable, resilient, equitable framework? And I would take any direction here from the PC. But really this begins to form, I think, a new vision statement for the beginning of the plan. And we'd like to work with, with this body to develop that. And then if you scroll down, you can see how incomplete this is. But I just started grabbing the statutory plan requirements and then trying to run these three words up against them. So how, how does your land use plan achieve these goals under these three words? What, what does your transportation plan look like if you want your transportation system to reflect these three words, et cetera, et cetera? So apologies for doing so much of this without jumping in with the planning commission. It started because we really needed a slogan for the sticker.
It's the little things.
It is. But it turned into a really excellent way to start thinking about this. And I have a really nice drawing somewhere of like these things actually weaving into a blanket, but it's in my head and not a graphic artist. I'd like to create.
Pie.
Might make a big pie with a lattice top. We're not sure yet. But this, this will, I think, really help us focus our public input over the next nine months or so. The goal into the very end of fiscal '24, so like by this time next year, we're starting to try to actually write the text of this plan. We want to bring it to the select board by the end of next summer, August or September of '24. And I'm hoping that the input and all of the thinking leads us to a really rigorous set of goals, policies, objectives and priorities. And that the text that goes on top of that is generally relatively short. This is what we need to do to meet this framework. We'd like then in fiscal '24 to be going after a little bit of help from CCRPC and funding to make the plan look good. In other words, we're happy to write the text. I think we're very organized around that. But we'd like to start reviewing text with the select board as, as calendar '24 closes out and we move into January issue of '25. Get a thumbs up on all of that through that spring of '25. And then by August of '25, the actual plan needs to be adopted. And we have something that looks good and is navigable, you know, online and in paper form is well illustrated and hopefully award winning. That's the goal. And, and, you know, we picked Williston 2050. I think those of you who lived through the 90s remember when everything was something 2000. Yeah. So that's 2050. But, but realistically, this plan will set the town's goals and priorities and work plan through 2032. And what you do in 2032 is certainly going to show up in what the town is like in 2050. So I think it's an acceptable stretch to encourage people to be thinking that far out.
I thought it was a good number.
It's nice. I mean, Williston 2032 doesn't have the same.
You want to be at least 20 years old.
Yes, it doesn't have the same ring. But I do think we, we do need to make sure it's clear. I just think the one thing about it is to be clear with people about how long the plan goes for without confusing them.
Yeah. And, you know, there's, there's sort of a section to be written upfront. It's, you know, how to use this plan? What is this plan for? We can, we can make sure that we, that we make that clear.
Other questions or comments?
I like the rubric. I, I feel like it can help ground us as we are considering things.
How, can I just ask quickly how you want feedback on the initial rollout or do you?
I, I'd love feedback.
Okay.
Anytime email. Anytime email anyway.
Okay.
We're going to iterate as we go and and as we bring a consultant up, we can talk about what gets handed off and what tasks continue to live with staff. And we're certainly going to come back and dedicate time to this group, especially around how we design. And prioritize our public outreach. What does this group feel it needs to hear most from the public? In order to write down those goals, objectives and priorities.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so our. Melinda and Emily, was there anything else about? That town plan update that you wanted to cover or was that it?
Yeah, I think Matt covered it. If you want to chat a little bit about some feedback ideas you have, I can take notes on them and. I definitely like the idea about schools because they're calling, looking for end of the year filler activities.
Yeah.
So we can get get that over there.
Yeah.
And I, after Green Update, I have some contacts at the school that I can reach out to.
Aaron Merrill is good for that. He's. Got an environmental. Background and.
Emily, if you need a contact at Allen Brook, I can help you. Just let me know.
Okay, cool. That would be great because I have more central school contacts.
Yeah, yeah.
And I can help you with either school.
Any, okay, so any quick comments or thoughts, initial reactions to the? Williston 2050?
I think it's really good. You got to jump on it.
Yeah.
And I think it's creative. The letters, I'm having a little hard time myself saying, oh, I want to put what I want for the town in that format, but I'm getting there. I think it's good. I think it's catchy.
Other thoughts or feedback?
I like it. This planning commission want to do a float in the town parade or something?
Yeah, I.
That would be a great thing to do.
I know. I think they were a little thin on floats last year. So I may have some thoughts along the lines of the. Been working for the past four years on like major justice equity diversity. For my national professional organization. And we came up with a. Basically a Jedi strategic plan for the organization that drives all the other strategic plans. So I have. A lot of. Experience with that and I'm happy to share it.
But I don't have things to share, but at Green Mountain Transit with the Board of Commissioners, we have a Jedi. Group and we have a rubric like that that we need to apply to any change making like to schedules or whatever. Is it, does it meet all these criteria about justice equity, diversity and inclusion?
Yeah. So I'm happy to kind of. Provide a little. Some thoughts on that. One of the is that. Yeah, I won't, I won't go into the details. Yeah, so I have some thoughts along those lines.
Yeah, guys, reach out to me and Matt and let's get something set up because I know we're working on. Reviewing RFP responses soon.
Okay.
And that, Melinda, correct me if I'm wrong, but this is probably a good time to think about our RFP and our work plan with them. And I know we might want to be making some tweaks to our own work plan, so we can try to incorporate those.
Yeah, yeah, I mean. So we didn't exactly get a robust response to our RFP and so based on that. We may be making some tweaks to the scope of work, try to figure out how we can get the most. Out of it and. I've also heard some feedback from. Someone related to. A a type of outreach that they would like to see that reaches underserved people. Like, for example, focus groups and that was something we hadn't. Originally like. You know, planned to do, but you could very well like, you know, kind of tweak things that way.
There's compensation planned in that program, like it's a compensated focus group.
Right, yeah.
Is the express reason for hiring a consultant for the outreach portion of this?
Yeah, we're thinking that we as staff would do most of the town plan writing and how that part is not going to be as. Challenging. And.
And CCRPC doesn't offer the service enough.
To. Well, so. Yeah, we did reach out to them this, and initially they said they wanted to bid on the town plan, but then.
Or the league of cities and towns.
Not really, yeah, CCRPC would be a great, you know, possible organization to work with. But they're like so busy that they didn't even bid on the.
Yeah, and like with with the way. Matt's been running the department and our trainings over the years and our our internal focus groups on like. Okay, where is our current town plan lacking? What statements and chapters are needed? I think. Having the the outreach component is going to be the most intensive. So the plan is have the assistance there.
Yeah.
We would come up with that draft internally. It's not going to look the same. At the end of the day, we're not going to do a boring word document. That more graphically rich thing could either be a template we. Purchase or plug into or have a consultant help with at the end, but the bulk of the town plan writing would be. Us. As staff.
I'm sorry, I have to go.
Okay, well, that's good to know. It would be, you know, one thing to that comes to mind immediately for me is also. That part of equity is also who you hire for consultancy, right? And and how you reach out and spread the word to, you know, folks who may be. From underrepresented communities themselves. And. And, you know. Kind of approach it that way too. I realize that's a. Can be a heavy lift. Okay, anything else on Williston 2050? Okay, thank you. All right, so here we are. Two minutes ahead of schedule. Yay, us. Progress report memo from staff and draft. Let's see, chapter 42, sorry.
Yes.
Bylaw amendments on the village.
Yeah, village and then after me, Simon will go over the accessory uses and cleanup. So the village bylaw draft is getting close to being ready for a public hearing. But some significant work still needs to happen on my part and the consultants' work. Last time the commission looked at this was in September, following a community meeting and some work sessions in the late summer. And based on the the input I heard from you guys and the public. I've been working on kind of coming up with the master edit list of the the chapter 42 document I shared. You'll see strike through, strike throughs that have a recommended text change. Notations on the side. So I've been trying to, you know, piece all the puzzle pieces of where I need to edit. I think there's going to be some bigger structural shifts in the the overall outline and some of the themes of the sections. That I still need to work on. But in general, I wanted to give the planning commission an overview tonight on. Some of the major highlights and getting your feedback on if you think this is going in the right direction. Or if you see other things that I need to focus on. The main reason for doing this is when we have a hearing draft ready, so I'll talk to Michael, organize all these comments, get a revised draft. And that one's going to be ready for the hearing. At that point, there should be very minor revisions or hopefully even no, probably there'll always be typo revisions. No matter what we do, there'll always be a couple of those, but that the major things are are handled. So the first topic was permit thresholds and process, and I think there is a lot of confusion. Trying to make it simpler and made it more complicated, so. The way it's handled is that the permit thresholds would be the same as they are throughout town. Discretionary permit, you go to the DRB administrative permit, it's improved by the zoning administrator. Or some very minor things that don't require a permit at all. The only difference from the village is that a certificate of appropriateness is required for some areas. They're absolutely required in the National Register Historic District. And then currently we have that additional review area. But we would. Broaden it to be contributing versus non-contributing structure. So.
And that was that one of the simplifications that we got feedback on?
Yeah, so I define permits are required here. Certificate of appropriateness is a determination that the proposed development meets the historic and design standards of this bylaw. For parcels with a contributing structure or parcels that are within that National Register District. There is now a list of things that do not require a certificate of appropriateness. A lot of these are things that don't require a permit anyway, so. Repair or identical replacement of exterior materials, interior renovations that don't change anything on the outside. Accessory structures less than 120 square feet, so your small backyard sheds. Site plan modifications to landscaping, driveways, et cetera. Those types of things. And then the permit thresholds are based on National Register District. When do you need an AP? What happens when you need a DP? For properties outside the National Register District, so. If you're outside the National Register District and your parcel doesn't have a contributing structure, you're a 1980s ranch on Tower Lane. You're treated the same as everywhere else in town, the zoning administrator. Or DRB may refer you to the hack, so maybe you're demoing the house and building something new. They might refer to comment or they the DRB or administrator might just be okay with it as it is. Are there any questions on permit thresholds?
I have a couple of questions. One of them was about the dimensional requirements and density. Bring that up. It was your third point. It's the bullets underneath.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that third or fourth bullet point about building footprints. That I just wondered where the total footprint no larger than 5,000 square feet came from. And and whether that was sort of tentative. Or firm?
Tentative.
Okay.
Yes.
I guess, so let me explain where I come from here, which is that similar to what we just saw in Essex. You know, a lot of the. A lot of the movements toward. More equity in the land use regulations have been moving those kinds of limitations. So that, for instance, if we had this kind of, I I I totally understand the, you know, distinct masses. And, you know, primary with the secondary or rear lesser height, et cetera. But at the same time, I wouldn't want to necessarily. Or I should say, I wouldn't want to unnecessarily limit that. If the site lent itself to something that was larger. And I I guess I'm also kind of bringing a little bit of the form-based code perspective here. Where maybe the thing that matters is, is, you know, the street view. And the the massing and the architectural forms and those kinds of things rather than the total square footage. And so I just wanted to kind of throw that out as a possibility and, you know, we don't have to talk about it tonight, but. Wondered kind of first of all, where the number came from and then also wondering what others think about that. And, you know, maybe we can play around with some. You know, 3D models or something and just to see, I think that's hard also to visualize. And and, you know, kind of play around with that a little bit.
On on those numbers, we looked at example buildings in other towns and we measured the square feet. And sort of tried to get gauge from the room what people thought was too big for.
I missed part of that meeting and because I had a conflict and I joined late. So I think that was that night, February 21st, probably. Daughter's birthday.
So I think this is very accurate what was happening at that meeting, but I also, I agree with your point. That I would rather have other things determine the design than a hard number of square feet. Although I'd be fine with the number of linear feet before something's broken up on the way we did.
Right, right. I feel like we've learned a lot from the form-based code processes about. You know, ways to make things. Feel a certain way or look a certain way and relate to the street in a certain way and and I don't mean to make your life more complicated. But I, you know, I feel like this, those lessons are things that we can bring into this process and. And also, you know, this again is is the issue of like, we need more housing and. And so allowing a little bit more flexibility has been shown, I was just reading an article on this the other day. On lower land use regulations. Actually does have a positive impact on not just the amount of housing, but the sort of equitable. You know, availability.
Right. So. These.
I do remember this.
Yeah, these images are showing something slightly different.
Yeah.
But what it's showing is if you do an addition where you're matching the facade and roof perfectly, that's a no-no. What would be better is if that massing is broken up.
Yeah.
And what this image also shows, I think we could have a diagram, is we don't want the length of that building along the street. Because traditionally in the village, your development goes back, but particular, I think. I I need to double check on where I landed on 5,000, but I think it was being on the generous side. Where if something is starting to get close to that 5,000 square feet, even with different massing, it's going to feel. Quite large here, but would still be permissive of you, that missing middle, and I can keep diving into that to make sure. If if we have a a high upper limit that. Still allows for all of those equitable missing middle houses, the response. This was came in response to having no limits on unit per acre density or no limits on commercial square feet. So. Based on planning, commission and public input, concern about that and not wanting structures that are too large. And the parallel requirement is having a minimum required open area, so you can't have a site that's.
Right.
Fully imperious, there's got to be some outdoor space for people. And then those two would work together, have things that might be a little bit bigger than what's here. But not out of place.
Right.
But I s- I hear point is heard and can keep looking into that one for sure.
I appreciate that.
I had another, or do you have more comments?
I do, but I'm happy to take a pause if you want to go.
Mine was just that on the thing about if the. If the building does not have a contributing structure on it, if the land does not, then it's just. Regular zoning and that misses one thing that I thought was true about the village, which was the streetscape. I know other places it says you have to be, the distance from the public way has to be consistent with things within. 70 feet either side, right? So we have that bit in there, but somehow. I thought we're, we're, you know, what if there's something with a contributing structure here, the contributing structure here, and this one is not? Can they just do anything? Can they just do anything, or is there some? I thought we had something in there about being um resonant or compatible with the. Um, those structures to either side, and I don't remember. Am I forgetting or?
No, you're, I don't think you are, I mean, good in the language.
We did have the average setback, so that that piece that you mentioned at the fir- at the beginning is.
Just like if it's not a contributing structure, to me, there still are some, there's still some influence of the. Uh, neighborhood on what you can do.
Right, so, and I can probably make that more explicit in this statement, so. A certificate of appropriate is not required. But the continuation be however, you're still held to the design standard, so. In our bylaw, you don't need a permit for your.
Okay.
Ten by ten backyard shed, but you're not supposed to put it in the setbacks, so there's like some self.
So this saying that you don't.
So it it should say, um, it doesn't require certificate of appropriateness. The the design standards for.
Right.
Um. Sections whatever through whatever still apply, so if you're getting a new permit for a new residential dwelling. You might not have to go to the hack, it might just not, it might just be not approving it, but he's still basing it on all those guidelines, yeah, and I can, I should make that more.
Got it. And and while while I had to forward, I just wanna say, I went through all these in some detail. And thought you were on the right track on all of them. I have not gone into the detailed edits. And I know I need to sometime.
Yeah, uh. Dude, oh. Yeah, I I also saw that was on our um, schedule coming up, so I I let myself off the hook from going through the. Edits and.
Yeah.
A lot of fine tooth comb, yeah, okay.
Yeah, and that's an overarching overarching statement for this whole discussion tonight, both village and bylaw, we're missing a couple PC members. We're just presenting all of these ideas to you, we're not expecting you to be having. Immediately warning a hearing on them, we're just kind of, you know, gauging temperatures and exploring them, because there's a lot on this agenda for sure.
Yeah. Um, um, so I had a couple more questions right back in that same spot, um, as before, number three. Um. Your next.
You're good, I'm just doing what Kate and Sam.
Um, okay, so I'll just do this for everyone else, um. Same same section, the maximum footprint of a detached rear lot structure that is secondary to a street facing. Principal structure is thirty five hundred square feet. Um, and again, I felt like, like I I don't have a problem with that number, I mean, it's not the size that's bothering me. With, this is the point right after the five thousand square feet one, um, again, I I think my. My preference is more that it's about the massing and the. It's relation to the street or the relation to the rest of the lot, or the the other building or things like that, and the. You know, the architectural form and and um, and so. It the the size seemed like the least important piece of that, like I understand, like you don't have gigantic things. Um, thirty five hundred is pretty big, but um, but it's, you know. But maybe prioritize the appearance, the relationship. And consistency with whatever this front building is, um. Because it says detached rear lot structure is secondary to a street facing principal structure, so. To me, that is the most important thing is is their relationship to each other and not so much. Uh, you know, an upper limit on the square footage.
Right, like a a well-designed three thousand square foot ADU barn.
Right.
Probably blends in more than a poorly designed two thousand square foot one, that one might stand out more, even though this one is wider and deeper.
Yeah.
Um, and part of all of this was delimiting building heights to two stories, plus a potential third attic story, so. We're not gonna be having crazy tall buildings.
Right, yeah.
And on your big house, little house, back house barn, the barn is often the largest of the three, which makes it. Um, a little strange to have it say that the back thing will be thirty five, when the front one can be five thousand. But I think if we get away from the number and more to the relationship.
Right.
Like the big house, the lost back house barn, if the thing in the back is bigger, but it feels like a barn.
Right, yeah, but it's actually a treeplex or something like that, right, yeah.
Examples, you know, across the street down here, where there's that four unit thing in a carriage house, or behind a historic building. There's problems with how it's cited and so forth, but. That doesn't feel like a four unit apartment building.
No, it's very subtle, yeah, yeah, exactly, yeah, right. Okay, my last point also right here is the question about uh fifty foot setbacks. And, um. So.
Yeah, it's at the center from the right of way.
It's from the right of way.
Right of way is wide as heck.
Yeah, yeah, and I just, again, just kind of coming from this position of. Like infills can be really valuable in the village and, um. You know, fewer fewer sort of. Uh. Numerical limitations, um, might give more flexibility. To do something that is very much in line with a site, very consistent with its neighbors, you know. But, you know, less than fifty feet back from the right of way, um, so anyway.
Are these town buildings, including the police station, fifty feet from the right of way? I think so, it might be a little less.
Closer than that, yeah, I have, I think they are. Um, and I, the way chapter forty two is written on that is, there is some squish to it. But I think we can, to your point, make it squishier.
So I guess, you know, I mean, just to summarize these three points that I made, it's it's really about. Like allowing some flexibility with these numerical limitations, um. And really prioritizing the look, the feel, the relations um to what's surrounding.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if we hadn't gone through the form-based code process and didn't have a lot of those guidelines in place for a different part of town. I would be hesitant to say that, but I feel like we have a lot of experience with those things, and we have stuff on the books, you know. Um, and the community has some familiarity with uh with our goals, with that, so. Um, yeah, so that was just me, my main feedback um from this.
New development and infill on part in parts of the village where the typical front setback from the road varies from the standards of the chapter. May need the average setback of the existing buildings, and the recommendation I had was rather than looking at. Three hundred were feet on both sides of the road, look on the existing side of the road. And we could even phrase that rather than be like an average of the three hundred feet, like in consideration, so. Maybe there's, maybe the average would set you farther back, because there's a couple, there's like one outlier, but. Um. It makes more sense to have it, yeah, the mean, and maybe not like a numerical mean, but a in consideration of what's around you. Um, and looking at just on that side of the road, because there are some places where it is really, really close. And then others where it's a little bit farther away and kind of.
Right.
Matching that.
Yeah, and you know, I guess the other point might be that if. You know, if there was a great looking plan for something where. It was gonna be thirty feet from the right of way. Even though surrounding buildings were forty five or sixty or whatever, um, like. I guess I don't, I don't wanna just outlaw that from the start, um, especially if there was. And we haven't, I I don't know, if if this is solely residential or if we're thinking mixed, um, but. You know, like the, um, the brick placed just down here.
That's really close.
That's really close, right, but it doesn't feel weird, right, like they have a big backyard. Um, I mean, it used to have, well, sort of.
Yeah, skinny, skinny, skinny backyard.
Right. Well, there's space, right, some of it's Carter enjoys, some of it, but, um, yeah, yeah, but the. I don't think, I don't think we should be scared of of kind of bringing things a little closer to the street. Um, especially like now we've got bike lanes and other kinds of. Pedestrian crossings and things like that, Wilson Road is, and the speed limit went down. When I first moved here, thirty five, it got lowered, like, so I feel like. That's a, those are good things to make the village have more of that walkability, that sort of human scale. And so keeping everything really far back. May not be productive, like, you know, I think it should be a little bit more a site by site kind of assessment.
And you can still have the green belt, because you can still have things a little closer and still have a tree lawn in front.
Yeah, yeah, and also I think a little sort of articulation and kind of difference is okay, like when everything is exactly. Lined up, you know, far back, it's kind of an oddness, so.
Yeah, um, we skipped over simplify material requirements, that kind of goes along with permitting and along with. What you're talking about.
And I did get it from this, um, and I didn't go look at the details, but we were going to, I I at least felt, and I don't know, that was the majority, that. If the material looks the same, it doesn't have to be the same on historic structure.
Right.
Whereas if it's fake slate, but it looks like slate, is that okay? If it's, if it's, um. Whatever, hardy board.
Yeah.
And it looks like wooden clavber. Um.
Right about the reveal.
Yes, if the reveal is the same and the trim is the same, et cetera, et cetera. Um, I can just say as somebody who lives in one of these old houses. There's places that would replace clavber and painted and repainted, and I would sure like to put hardy board.
Yeah, they just rot so fast. Yeah, the wood today is not the wood of two hundred years.
That's right, you replaced the one place it was bad, and the new one rocks much faster than the old one did.
Okay, so sorry to have personally taken up so much of that discussion, um, maybe partly because I missed part of that meeting, but. Um, Kate and Sheila, any comments or questions, or Emily, do you have anything to add?
I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I guess.
Megan, I appreciate your um, feedback on the size.
Okay.
Limit, I you, but I defer to you, as you know, a lot more than I do.
I appreciate it, Ellie, go ahead.
Um, I think I agree with the point, I'm just wondering administratively, does that make it, well, if if there aren't like hard, like. Three thousand five hundred feet, if everything is case by case, does that? Is that a challenge for the town to figure out what, how to consistently apply policy?
Yeah, my my sense would be that, I mean, you guys can answer in a second, but. There's not a lot of development going on in the village, and there aren't that many lots that are eligible. So that would be my gut reaction, but I don't know if you guys have different perspectives.
It it would need to have some some findings that you, the administrator or the DRB can make, or. If if it says like that setback is is purely up to the discretion of either body. It creates some risks for the applicant, like, well, are they gonna make it be fifty feet, or can I be five feet from the right of way, so. There's, I I hear your point, Ellie, and that's kind of been why this has been taking as long as it has, because we've been trying to find that perfect balance of. Giving flexibility, but then not so much flexibility that you can't make a decision that. If it got appealed, would would prevail.
Right.
And then having like qua- quantitative metrics are really easy to enforce and administer, and if the setback shall be fifty feet. Someone tries to appeal on that or do something different, it's easy to rectify that, but then it prevents those like creative solutions, so. I think that's been the root of the village bylaws, trying to find the right few words and bullet points of. What are the findings of the administrator or the DRB's making, and where is saying two or two and a half stories? Thirty six feet a good limit, but then um, finding the appropriate balance of maybe that's okay, but not. A square footage limit or a setback limit, and trying to find that that middle point.
Thank you.
Um, the other ones are are fairly, are simpler, I would say, uh, so going with a required private open area metric. Um, this also part of the concern of if we have no one limit on commercial area or units per acre. Um, that there be no outdoor space. Uh, the standard I have drafted. Um, that it would be ten percent of the parcel area or fifteen hundred square feet, which is ever greater. I looked at the smallest lot we have in the village, the house at the corner of Whitney Hill Road. And I think they have about fifteen hundred square feet when you factor in some of their their backyard. Um, so this would mean if a half acre parcel is developing, it would be to provide a little over. Twenty one hundred square feet of outdoor space, and it would have some restrictions, so it must be in the side or rear yard. If it's in the side yard, it can't be closer than that principal structure, um, so there are some homes where it's a. A wider lot, and you have side yard space for, you know, your patio, your curling, and and that's okay. Um, but a private privacy fence may be required there. Um, on site, solar generation, so this one might need to relook at based on what, um. The South Grolling something is doing, but that's more in trying to require solar, not prohibit it. In terms of design review, um, we would say that. Um, if you're doing a solar installation on a contributing structure, it would require a certificate of appropriateness, so you wouldn't need a zoning permit. You can't require zoning permit, but we do wanna know that its mounting system doesn't obscure irreparably damaged. Or necessitate removal of architectural defining features, um.
I'm sorry, I don't want to get into it, but I I like all that, but I don't like forty two point two three point three. Um, ground mounted systems, to me, are often less aesthetically pleasing than on the roof. And the thing we don't have in here right now that we talked about at the meetings was to have, if it's on a roof that's not visible from the. Public way, then I don't think we should have um any restriction other than that you don't. Damage the the historic parts, you know, that part's fine, but it sounds like we're discouraging it. On on roofs when I would. Definitely not do it if it's not visible from, not to want to discourage it if it wasn't visible from the public right of way. And I'm not sure about the rest, um, but I I think for now it's discouraging it when it is visible is probably okay. But I wouldn't want to encourage ground mounted either. Uh, in in unless it's like a solar canopy over the parking. Which is not what I consider ground mounted.
Yeah, ground mounted is like a solar tracker.
Yeah, well, and that's an in-between one. Uh, because when people say ground mounted, I think of the ones that are on the ground, and those are the ones that have to therefore follow the contours of the ground. And so they're not as, um. They look a little bit more ragged, because they're not fixed to a roof that's one shape or on a pole that's of one shape. They follow the land obdulations. Um.
Yeah, I was thinking like a a square solar tracker too, or, um. They have cool ones that are like flowers, I don't know how all those work, but wouldn't wanna prohibit that.
Right.
So maybe more clarity on type of ground.
More, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't just, I wouldn't encourage ground mounted, I wouldn't discourage rooftop. But we may wanna say something about ones that are, the only rooftop that's visible from the street.
Yeah, it seems like ultimately the visibility is the question, right, and it's, and that's. It's pretty much on contributing structures, right, in the historic district, so.
Right.
I mean, like, as far as I'm concerned. Like, as far as I'm concerned, especially thinking about Brian's comments earlier, like. As long as it's not visibly object, you know, sort of objectionable in some way. Um. Then. Don't really have restrictions, right?
In our rubric, is it, is it resilient? You know, does it help us be sustainable?
Yes, right, exactly. Like that, you know, that bumps it up.
Yeah. And I, I did try to word this in such a way that it wouldn't be onerous on a property owner, so. Ninety-nine point nine percent of the time, you're going to be working with a solar installer where they want to test the structural integrity of your home. Or, uh, number, as the first step. Um, and then they would design the mountain team system and they do have, to say, for example, you have a slate roof and we don't want you to remove your slate roof. For the purpose of putting solar on, but there are ways to mount it in a safe way.
Um, right.
Yeah, maybe we have solar. Um. I don't know, glass one day. We don't want you to take out your, your beautiful ornate window to put in solar. You still have all the other options of rooftop, carport, canopy.
Yeah.
So we can steer you away from some things, but not all of them. All right. And the last one was, uh, location of commercial uses. So this mainly came up at that August work session. Um, where we're saying that commercial uses must have a frontage along Williston Road. Um, and there is concern about. The gray area between something that is the same intensity or slightly more intense than a home business, but might not be a home business. Um, like a professional office, small yoga studio, um, home businesses, the operator must. Live there, so owner or renter. Um, whereas a commercial use doesn't require the operator to live on site. I'm proposing to define a lower intensity commercial use. It doesn't have an outdoor sales or work area. You can have a small outdoor storage area that's screened. Um. And your solid waste management is comparable to that of a residential home.
Yeah, it sounds good to me. Um. This is very Megan comment, but. Um. For the examples, I don't know if this is going into the document itself. Um. But again, in the equity department, um, I think we should. Um. Consider what kinds of examples we want to give. So saying professional office and yoga studio, those are. Very much. Uh, a sort of certain demographic that is associated with that and. Um, and so, and yet a lot of home businesses are, you know, very. Across the spectrum, right? And so maybe thinking of a couple of other examples that are not quite so.
Um, I would almost say go with no examples because.
That's fine.
That's where we always bite ourselves in our foot where someone comes to us with a use idea. It's like, we don't even know what. Any ICS category would be because no one's ever heard of it before. It's a new thing.
Yeah, yeah.
Rage rooms.
Rage rooms, exactly. Yeah. Categorize them as like indoor rack, right? But it's not the same as like, I don't know, it's hitting a tennis ball. Like a lighter version of rage.
I apologize for going back over territory, but I remember talking about, well, how is North Williston Road and Old Stage Road different from Williston Road? And, um, this addresses that you could have something a little bit commercial, but still it couldn't be at the level that you could do on Williston Road. And so I'm still uncertain why something that could be on Williston Road couldn't be on Tower Lane. Just to raise an example is. I'm my off on that.
Oh, we had, it might be my notes, which I don't know if I can search. Right, I do remember that conversation about.
Yeah.
Williston Road, maybe you love that same level on North Williston Old Stage.
And I was thinking, why are you restricting it at all? Because who's going to? Yeah. It. There's all levels of business. And, um, who's going to want a business? Where it's not on a road that people would like to be on, you know, or you know what I mean?
Well, there's a lot of, you know, things that aren't, um. That don't require traffic going by, like there's specialty things that people would find. Online or something, or a listing of some sort. And so it's not dependent on traffic going by. I mean, I think that's been a big.
Somebody has like, let's say a knitting shop or something that people will find it because they're interested.
Yeah.
Who cares if it's on Maple Road or on Tower Lane as opposed to on US Route Two is what I'm, the, the issue I have. Your neighbor to a business might care, might care, like people don't like the dog rescue happening next door. Um, but is that different from the neighbor on Route Two? You know? I don't under, I don't quite understand the Route Two part.
Okay. So I don't know if we want to kind of work on that when we get to the chapter.
So I wonder if, if commercial uses is one to circle back on with like, here's a couple of options. And from mostly restricted to least.
And we've already said even on Route Two, no loading docks and et cetera, et cetera. We, we've already limited it on Route Two. So, so what you did was a step in the right direction.
Yeah.
But I think it might want to go farther.
Yeah, and, and overall, Emily, this is great.
Yes.
I feel like this is really, you did amazing with tweaking all of our. Often fragmented comments into something more coherent.
Cool, good to hear. Thank you. And if you have any other thoughts in that.
When, when would be the best time for you schedule wise for those of us who want to go through the detail to go through the detail?
I think we have a meeting devoted to that and that's scheduled, don't we? Uh, coming in June, maybe?
So I don't know if this will be, oh, I'm seeing the schedule now. So here in draft of.
Oh, hearings, okay, hearing draft, right.
I don't know if it can be ready for the, the June sixth one. That might be cleanup and maybe housing. Um. So I'd say. You know, this week or next week, if you, if you want to get together and shape them.
Okay, well, I think I need to go through it personally first. I may have like three or four things, but. That's been, but thank you for.
Yeah.
But in general, would it? Be useful for us to have looked through the chapter by our next meeting?
Yeah, I'd say so. Look through that chapter with all the markup.
Okay.
And if you have comments, if something doesn't make sense.
Great.
Let me know.
And let you know ahead of time. By email or?
Yeah, let me know ahead of time by email, if call, if you want to set up a meeting, if you want to tell me at the next meeting. Whatever works best for you. Fortunately, it's a five Tuesday month, so you'll have three weeks until that June six.
Time for homework.
Yeah. Um, and June sixth, we're, we are anticipating a transmittal from the specific plan advisory committee.
Okay.
I, and I expect that will take up a fair bit of agenda time.
Great. All right, so. Clean up. Right on time. You're doing so well. Um. Simon, you're going to drag us through this?
Just let me share.
Oh, yeah, you're not home, sorry.
I joined right. Okay, there we are. That's, that's, that's my most. This is, um, I guess clean up, but it's predominantly, um. Accessory uses and I should have highlighted, um, a change to the habitat severance assessment.
Where have we gone from hack to attack?
Uh, we've got attack and we've also got. We'll come to the end. Um, so Emily and I spoke with the hack. And about this, and this is predominantly, uh, two things really to reduce their membership from seven to five, because they've been having trouble. Uh, recruiting members, uh, but also to better reflect. Uh, the type of work they do, they, they, you know, they advise on historic applications in the village. Um, but also design review in the, uh, uh, design review district. So those are two. Uh, minor chan, changes that I think the hack, uh, the hack. Um, as they're commonly constituted were supportive of. Uh, the second, second change is just, um, most of this Emily has already gone over. This is changes to the. Uh, the permit thresholds and exemptions to, um, encompass all the changes that happen in the village. Uh, and also make it sequentially a bit more logical. In terms of how a chapter four is set out. As someone who joined eighteen months ago, it did take a little while to get my head around. Uh, the various thresholds we have, what permits are required when.
Yeah, that whole chapter is like, it's kind of set up like double negative questions. I've been here for six years and I always have to like read it very carefully and make sure, am I reading this? The right way before deciding what activity needs a DP or an AP.
Yeah. So there's a lot in there. So anything we can do, I don't think is ever going to be easy. Um, anything we can do to make it easier. Um, it's helpful. Uh, and then there was just a bit of cleanup to, um. Totally exclude temporary events from, from regulation by the Department of law laws, which is. Um, in reality, just recognizing. Uh, the fact that they're regulated by different ordinance. And the chapter seventeen, um, so that is. Um. I know we have had some discussions with, uh, manufacturers who want to operate on a larger, uh, scale than our accessory, uh, eating place allows them to. Um, but there are some people from locating in Williston. Uh, I know the Goodwater guy would have liked additional space when he was doing his discretionary permit. Uh, and he has also been, uh, asking for additional outdoor seating area. Um, which we have actually. Granted him through special event permits before they went over to the temporary event ordinance to allow to have a larger patio. Uh, with the summer, but because of the. Specificities of how that temporary event ordinance is structured. Um, he can't actually use that anymore because it's much more time limited. So these are two changes really to, um, I guess you, you would say help. Recognize this sort of growing. Uh. Food, uh, industry, uh, in Vermont, which probably only going to get bigger. So we've gone for, um, something relatively large. And I did a big increase there up to five thousand. That's, uh. Actually, uh, someone, someone did mention to us that this also was allowed in South Burlington. Uh, and then there's also a big increase there for, uh, the outdoor patio areas. And these are of course accessories, so they do have to be. Accessory to someone manufacturing or distributing, uh, from the premises. So.
I like everything in that section.
Okay.
And the next one is just to remove, uh, temporary events from regulation when we do accessory.
Yeah.
Um, also a requirement that now allows us to make sure the demolition sites are secured. Um, we do occasionally get permits to demolish a building, um, which we grant and it'd be helpful to. Have a bylaw backup to make sure people put a barrier around the site to stop unauthorized access. Uh, but also to control erosion whilst they are, uh, demolishing. Um, now, that is also in WV eighteen. Um, we, we've been looking at mobile vendors. We do from time to time. Um, get queries at the front desk or over the phone about someone who wants to set up. Uh, they're generally food trucks, but this amendment would actually apply to any vendors. So it would. Apply to, you know, vaccination centers or mobile clinics, uh, things like that. Uh, and essentially, at the moment, we require discretionary permanent always from the mobile vendors. Uh, so when we explain to them that it's, it's five hundred dollars in fees and addressed to the DRB. And it's going to take them ten weeks. Uh, we generally don't hear back from them. So this is. So this is something to make it a little easier on people who are doing small scale, uh, mobile vendors. So the intention is that they'd be allowed in, in commercial, industrial, agricultural parking lots. Uh, but not residential parking lots. Uh, if they affect less than a thousand square feet, it can be done administratively. Uh, that ties in quite well with the chapter four, uh, limit on site work, which is also a thousand square feet. Uh, anything big than that, they need discretionary permit.
Ken's question.
Yeah.
Um. What about municipal lots?
Uh, that is. Not covered here. I, I guess that would be us and the Armory, I think. So.
School.
Yeah, the school, um, I can't, I can't really imagine.
The parks.
Community parks.
The unique parks. We could add allowed an institutional or, um, I always like saying non-residential. Cause then it, everything else isn't, it's more broad by saying, rather than saying commercial industrial.
Yeah, yeah.
Non-residential parking lots. If someone wanted to do. That on a town property, ultimately the property owner is the town manager, the select board.
Right.
So then the town would have to decide. The select board, if they want to have a policy on how they handle that.
Yeah.
Um, the schools are school districts, so if the school district wanted to have. You know, a food truck there.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So, non-residential.
Yeah.
Yeah. Change. I like that. Um, my other question was, um, what does it mean to affect in this instance?
So I think the way we look, the way we probably interpret this is that they would ask to submit a site plan. And everything they do is contained within that thousand square feet. So that would be things like parking their truck. Uh, putting out their picnic tables or other furniture. You know, if they wanted a sandwich or something like that, and the barriers that delineate that area. Um, would have to be contained within a thousand square feet.
I see.
So, you know, driving, generally they're in parking lots, they can always.
Right.
Park nearby to use it, so we wouldn't include that.
Okay, I, I think it just should be clarified because it, it, I didn't know what that meant. Uh, administrative permit where they affect less than a thousand square feet. Uh, maybe occupy or.
I can, I can change.
Something like that.
I can also have a look at exactly what we say in. Um, probably in the existing chapter.
Yeah, what are usual purposes?
For, for that particular aspect, because gen, as a general rule, I try and make everything. Line up.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I just feel like effect is very ambiguous.
Actually, it does say to be minor site work must affect less than a thousand square feet.
Yeah.
But I think we, um, Simon, you might already have this in your draft, that it means like. Your, your truck. Your picnic tables, if you have a trash bin or sandwich board, all of that.
Yeah, I mean, I could, we could, I guess there's two ways we can handle this. We can get it into the checklist. Um, to kind of find what affects the means, say everything must be contained in that, or we can just change the regulation. And.
Yeah, I, I don't care which direction you go. I just feel like it's a little bit ambiguous.
I hate to do this, but on the non-residential, what if they wanted to put a food truck for an event at Eagle Place? Williston, those things.
Oh. That are.
Yeah.
Housing, it's not. We don't treat it as residential for.
It's officially commercial.
It's officially commercial. And with that apply here too, because to me, that would be an okay place with permission of the controlling people.
Well, that's okay, because it's non-residential.
Yeah.
Right.
So I think if we. So if we could look at clarifying that, I think.
Okay.
Um. We always don't see any housing as non-residential. I wouldn't want to introduce something that contributes to that.
Non-residential covers it in great shape. I was just worried if I switch. I was just worried by switching that to.
Non-residential, including senior living.
Yeah.
We will touch base with Matt on that one soon.
Yeah.
Just, I, I do think it's important to be clear.
Okay.
Thank you.
And without, without any other questions, she's gone.
Would there be a, like, would there be an event in like a parking lot of an apartment building where that might make sense to have a food truck? Would that be?
So events would be temporary events, so they could have food trucks, you know, a couple of times a year if they wanted to enter that ordinance. This is, it's like on a regular basis.
Okay.
Okay.
Uh, residential improvements. So you can put your dog kennel in the side of your yard, you can't put it in the front. Uh, and you don't need a permit for it, um, which I think is a change. You've made in response to queries about people putting dog kennels in their front yards under the guise of being fencing. Um, so that lines out that issue. Uh, and the second is just allowing automated swimming pool covers instead of barriers. Um, which is a question we get a lot of this time of year. And whether can, people can use those and still maintain a safe pool without having to have a fence around it.
What is an automated swimming pool cover? It's a retractable cover. Uh, so.
They're quite rigid, right?
Yeah, they're quite rigid. You can, a small child or a pet could walk out on it. Different strains of thought. Some people think fences are safer, something pool covers are safer. It kind of depends on. Where you're, which, which type of company you are, you fence company or a pool cover. But what the queries we've had about this, um, a fence often doesn't latch. Or critters can still get in, it's still very easy to get through, whereas an automated pool cover, it seals the water. Off.
It's also just a really good anti-drowning.
Right.
Prevention thing.
Yeah.
Uh, minor changes to the signage chapter to, which was, um, littered with references to special events to remove those. Um, we previously. Um, theoretically at least get permission for signage for special events at the same time we approved those special events. And there was no real guidance on what was and wasn't acceptable. So now that the temporary events have been moved to the manager's office, uh, this gives people an allowance of. Uh, several signs that they can have for a period of thirty days. Uh, as associated with any approved event, and then it's taken down, uh, within two days following conclusion of the event. So we went for twenty-four square foot wall sign, which would probably be a banner. And twenty-four square foot seems to be the size of sign, but Williston has generally decided it's comfortable with. Um, across town, uh, one freestanding sixteen foot sign. And four small directional signs of two square feet or less. And then anything going back needs, needs a permit from us. Uh, and then lastly, something the conservation commission have been working on. Um, in strategic wildlife habitats, significant wildlife habitat areas. Um, during discretionary review, um, developers are required to. Uh, prepare habitat disturbance assessment, which basically says what the impact is going to be. And what mitigation they recommend, uh, they're recommending, uh, to allow the effects to be judged. Um, so this. Takes that sort of out of their hands and contracts, the town will contract with the biologist, um, developers' expense. Uh, and the idea behind that is to allow a more, uh, objective assessment to be made of the transit impacts. Um, so that the, the biologist can, uh, write in their report without, um, I think, you know, people always. Uh, you know, do what they feel is correct, but I think, um, it should be easier. Uh, to be true to yourself.
Well, there's no question then of coercion or.
Yeah.
Influence or something like that. Yeah. That's good.
Well, that was it.
One last thought, um, on chapter twenty, would there be interest in the planning commission to. Allow poultry chickens on parcel.
Yes.
An acre.
Yes.
We saw that from Port War post today and we're like.
Didn't read it.
But, um, now that Joy is not on the slideboard, sorry, Joy, if you watch this. It, it was that close to, because right now, yes, technically you can't have chickens in the village and, or any where, where it's.
Parcels less than an acre cannot have any livestock.
Yeah.
More than an acre, you can be whatever funny farm you want to be. So this biolog amendment would probably just be like literally two words that poultry is allowed on all parcels.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
Yes.
I mean, they're already there. They're already there.
This results in a lot of zoning violations.
And we allow people to keep dogs in their yards, um, some of which are louder than most chickens. But noise is, we still have noise ordinance.
So is this the female poultry limit that we talked about before, or does that even matter?
We could, I think we could do that in no research, so the noisy ones.
The female chickens are pretty loud. Someone in my life's got one and it was going at six fifteen I M.
You don't always know what you're getting when you get chicks. And so you don't want to penalize somebody because they accidentally got one and haven't.
Got a lab one.
Yeah, and I haven't yet found it, and you know, we homed it.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, so you don't know, right.
I, I would just say chickens are allowed, and if something's noisy, something's noisy, same as a dog barking.
Right.
Um, so I've got excited when I saw the heading about A D U's and stuff that we were going to put something in about having to be. Um, for short, I think it's something about short-term rentals and something. Um, are we not going to put something in at this point about having to live on the premises to run a Airbnb?
Where was this that you saw?
The stuff that Simon just showed, the heading of the section that those changes are in. What, what's the heading?
Uh, it might be, I might put A M D's on it, uh, which is standard. Naming format, I think this, uh, I didn't see, I might have included a reference to A D U's. Um, they're definitely in the residential improvements chapter.
Can you read accessory uses and structures? Didn't see that.
Right, yeah.
So what would be the suggestion, this is related?
Well, I don't know, uh, we, we had discussion of this, what, in what context? It was for affordable housing. It was, um, or for.
You talking about short-term rentals?
Yes.
Okay, not A D U's necessarily.
Right, which is often, but it would typically be in an A D U if you have to have the person who's running it be resident.
Right.
So, um, there was discussion about whether we should do something. Knowing, seeing the problems that Burlington and other municipalities have had with. What could be potential housing for people in the town. Um, becoming Airbnb rental space. And also Airbnb rentals being done over the internet and people, when the next air neighbor is renting as an Airbnb and not resident. They, you get complaints and there's sort of nobody to complain to because they're not around. And so. My feeling was, we should say you have to be, live on the premises if you run a short-term rental. That, that would be, because there is a value to having short-term rentals. There is income for some people. That have extra space and, so to me, the, all the good parts are there if the person's living there. Because then they're aware if there's problems with the big people who come and spend the night.
So this, this would be in effect, saying you can only either let out a room or a series of rooms in your property.
Yeah, you could, you can rent.
Yeah.
Normally, you know, with a lease, but you can only do day-by-day rental, short-term rentals. If you live on the property. And that's what I would propose, and I, I know. Um, Alex didn't like that idea.
Okay, was it, this was something that, I'm, I feel like I've pissed out.
Yeah, this is kind of more part of the housing.
Survey on short-term rentals attitudes and thoughts. Yeah, we probably need to revisit that at some point anyway.
Yeah, and that, that's probably more in the Matt and Melinda domain.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. All right, anything else in the, in this? Great.
Yeah.
Um, all right, so we are going to. Uh, our next meeting is June sixth. We, um. Because we have three weeks until that, we're going to try to get Emily any comments on chapter forty-two. Right chapter. Um, based on her markups that she's done. Um, any other comments or business? Um, I don't see, one thing I had asked Matt about for June was, um. Our leadership discussion. Which turns over on July first, so we'll just maybe want to add that to, uh, to one of those agendas.
Right, um, yeah, I'm not sure if we would do that on June sixth or twentieth or do it at the first meeting in July, but we'll get that on that.
Sounds good. All right, anything else, anybody? All right, we're done early. Thank you for your time and, uh.
Simon gets ten hours and fifteen minutes till his next meeting.
Unrolling that map on the. Right.
Thank you very much.
Shayla, I just wanted to apologize for not returning your email before about the issue with, um. Being recognized at this left board meeting.
Oh, no, that's okay.
Yeah.
Um, no, I had talked to Matt about just, um, I can come in person if I just plan further ahead for, um. You know, for kid care, so I, um, want to make sure that the next time there's a meeting where we're going to go over there. Uh, and have comment that I just kind of get tuned in a little bit more to that so that I make this.
That would be helpful. Yeah, none of us were able to see the, the Zoom screen.
Right, yeah.
I think, you know, it was basically up to Eric, and if he missed it, then like no one was kind of also catching it. Um, so apologies there, um, and hopefully that'll smooth out in the future.
Yeah, and that's a good point to note that the select board, they do use the webinar format. So while you see everybody that attends on Zoom. They don't see all of the webinar attendees, and if you're attending a webinar, you don't see who else is on there. So. If people are trying to have their voices or presence noticed in person is the way to go.
Right. Or possibly like email ahead of time and let them know that you would like to be participating hybrid. I mean, what's the point of hybrid if you can't?
Yeah, I, I would, I mean, I am very committed to coming in person to the next time that we're going to do that, because I want to make sure that I am heard. However, I definitely have a problem with the fact that there is supposed to be a hybrid option. You can't actually use it.
Yeah, I think that's my point is that if you're going to say it's hybrid, then there should be some mechanism to be able to have a voice.
Right, I would say let, definitely let Eric know in advance if you're going to attend hybrid. Um, public comments also open at the beginning of every meeting too, for general comments. If you don't want to wait first.
Where they're participating in their meeting and some of our members are not seen or recognized, then that's a problem.
Yeah.
Should Reese be seeing either of the two chat messages that we haven't seen?
I think those were links.
Yeah, those were the.
Yeah. Yeah. Great, thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, everyone.